I'm going to call this meeting to order. The Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees, regular session on Tuesday, April 24th, 2018, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 1515 Cherry Brook, at 5:30 PM. I'm going to give the invocation, and I've asked Mr. Roberts if he'll lead us in the pledges to the flag. If you'd stand and bow with me, please. Our most gracious heavenly Father, Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the opportunity, Father, that you've given each of us to serve the children of this district. And we thank you especially for those that have given their lives to teaching our children and to assuring their well-being. Father, we have a special prayer this evening as we pray for Jack Bailey and his family as they have just experienced a terrible loss, and we ask that you be beside them and walk with them through all the valleys that they will go through. Father, we also pray for Jack and others that are in Peru, being your hands and feet. We thank you for all those that serve in our military and our first responders, and we thank you and ask for your hedge of protection around them. Now, Father, be with us as we go through the business of this meeting. Keep us in your will and help us to do what you would have us to do. We ask all these things in Jesus' precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen. The American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Board members present this evening are Ms. Nelda Sullivan, Ms. Maris El Kiano, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicki Morgan. Board members absent are Mr. Jack Bailey. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of the meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The first order of business, we're going to adjourn to executive session, Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer employee. Consideration of settlement agreement regarding Pasadena Band Activity Account Investigation slash Audit Number 2017-11, J. Smith. 551.071, to consult with district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty of the district under the code of professional responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act. When the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. And we will reconvene in open session as soon, as close to 7:00 PM as we can be here. We're going to reconvene in open session, and I welcome each of you to our regular scheduled board meeting. Obviously, this is not the only meeting we have monthly. We have several, depending on the situations and the things that we undertake, but we welcome you to this regularly scheduled board meeting. I know there's a lot of excitement and a lot of anticipation out there, and so we're not going to keep you in suspense. We have no special recognition tonight. We have no public comments. And so since it is a very interesting agenda, I'm going to reverse the order of the agenda a little bit and move personnel up to at this point in time. So, Ms. Kiano?
Madam President, I have a vote to approve Addendum A through G.
Second. Motion by Ms. Kiano, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, that we approve Addenda Pages A through G. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Now, it's your privilege to introduce those that we've just named.
Definitely. I would like to congratulate and welcome Tara Crumb. Congratulations, you are the new counselor parent coordinator at Lomax. Very excited, congratulations. Do you have family with you?
I do. I have a husband, James, and my daughters, Yana and Ashley, and my whole family, Mrs. Sidney, and Ms. Mills, Ms. Sack, and Ms. Sassen.
Welcome. Congratulations. I don't believe she's here this evening. Maya Lukashi Vashi. We would just like to announce that she is the new licensed special in school psychology. And then another individual, Susan Wilcox, I believe is not here this evening, is a new audiologist for the district. And then Mikey Eskamia. Congratulations. You all are looking at the new principal of Miller Intermediate. You have a big cheer squad right there, so you can go ahead and introduce those.
So, I've got my wife, my son Eskamia, and my daughter, Olivia Eskamia, and my son, Evan Eskamia, and my whole family.
Congratulations, the new principal at Queens Intermediate. I know you have family.
I have my lovely wife, Annika, and my son, Jordan, Jackson, and Jacob, and my little princess that will be on the way of justice.
You're going to have a girl, finally?
My father, my mother, my father-in-law, my mother-in-law, Miss Burris, and my sister-in-law, and also my married family, and last but not least, my Queens family.
We're all very excited for you.
Are you the king over there now?
Not yet. Troy's like, "Not yet."
I see your sector as the king of Queens, I think is what it's called.
We would like to congratulate the new principal of San Jacinto Intermediate, Diane Phelan.
I have my husband Casey, and my daughter, all the way from College Station, Lynn, and my mom, Claudia, and of course, my big Keller family that I'll be leaving, but my new sleep family that I'll be joining soon, so, thank you.
We're excited for your new journey, and we would like to welcome Carla Merka. Carla is the chief financial officer. Did you bring family with you this evening?
I have my son, Jonathan Merka, and his wife, Julie Merka.
Welcome to Pasadena. As you can see, we're a very big family here. Congratulations, Stella.
Welcome back home.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I'm popular and unpopular tonight in the same room. I'm sure the Keller folks are unhappy with me, and hopefully the San Jacinto folks are happy.
No comment.
Neither? Okay, great. Doing really well tonight.
Okay, then, we're going to, let's go ahead and complete the personnel section. Consideration and possible approval of four educational interpreter units in 10 slash 187 days for the 2018-19 school year. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and settlement agreement regarding Pasadena Band Activity Account Investigation slash Audit Number 2017-11, J. Smith.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Page 119 and 120 are certified personnel. We don't act on those, but they're in there for your perusal.
Do you want to let them go?
Yes, and if you were here to recognize or to show your excitement for your new principals or CFO or audiologist or whoever you're here for, you certainly are welcome to leave at this point in time. If you'd like to stay for the meeting, we're excited to have you here, but you might become a little bored. Thank y'all for coming.
You think the rain's going to come?
I think the rain is going to come.
Ready to go, man. Too late. Hey, man, don't be, be around. Don't go hide.
Are you sure?
I'm sure.
Okay.
Don't be dancing out there, Diane. She says, "I'm happy, I'm going." There's one of my assistant principals.
No.
You know Jennifer?
Oh, yes.
Blonde in the back. Hey, hey, where's everybody going?
We're going to give them a couple of minutes to get out of the room and everybody to find a new seat, and then we'll continue. So leave and be quiet.
What's going on, Billy?
I usually call him Bill. That's like, I call my husband Billy, but he's billed everybody else.
Sounds like.
Okay. Let's go ahead and move on. Next on the agenda, reverting back to our formal agenda, is the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion has been made by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Kiano. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. We're through with the personnel section, so we're going to move to the educational section. Consideration and possible approval of adjustments made to the 2018-19 academic calendar. Do you want to explain those, or is Rhonda here to?
Rhonda? She's back there.
Rhonda?
Do you want to just explain the small change on the calendar and why we're bringing it back just for their final approval?
Hello. Okay, we just had the commissioners change the rules a little bit on waiver days that are allowed under early release, so they don't give extra minutes anymore for waiver days, so the number, I mean, early release days, so the number of minutes that they actually show up for an early release day, half the day, is how many we get. So we had only added that day in because we thought we would get a full-day credit, but since we are not, then we decided to let everybody out early. It'll be used as a makeup day if we need it, but we don't anticipate needing it.
Very good.
Thank you.
So, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2018-19 agreement between Avondale House and Pasadena Independent School District for Education Services and tuition of seven special education students.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2018-19 agreement between Avondale House and Pasadena Independent School District for Education Services and tuition of seven special education students.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of boundary changes from Fisher Elementary to Maysmith Elementary.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion?
Board members, I just want you to know that Tom Swan and Angie Stallings worked on this together, met with parents, got feedback, worked with the campus principals as well. So they've put together quite an extensive packet of information for you about who that exactly impacts, but just for your reference, we built the new Maysmith in Fisher's attendance zone, so that's what necessitated the change.
It was really not that many kids.
No.
And just those two schools are involved. That's great.
So nothing really changed except for feeder patterns? Feeder patterns didn't change?
Feeder patterns did not change.
And what was the general consensus from parents?
And y'all jump up and tell me, only two came to the meeting, but there was?
There were quite a few.
Okay.
Twenty parents that came to the meeting. Two of them had questions that were extensive about boundary shifts and about the feeder pattern, because the Fisher parents were wanting their kids to stay in the same feeder pattern, excuse me. And after we listened to them and looked at their concerns, we decided to go ahead and let them stay in the same feeder pattern that they were zoned to when they were originally in Fisher.
They wanted to go to Kendrick, part view in Rayburn.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions?
You did a beautiful job with the packets.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll do it.
Thank y'all. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of partnership agreement for after-school centers of education, ACE, Cycle 10, with communities and schools, Brazoria County Inc., for Red Bluff Elementary and Fisher Elementary for 2018 through 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion? I have a question.
Sure.
Why Brazoria County?
Barbara, do you want to speak to that?
The CIS that y'all are familiar with is a joint venture between Southeast Harris County and Brazoria County. They have the same officers, the same employees and everything. This year, the grant's being written by Brazoria rather than Southeast. That's why it's there.
Okay.
And they gave us two slots of their grant.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval to enter the 2018-19 interlocal agreement with Harris County Department of Ed for music therapy.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Kiano. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of a contract with Kuznich Consulting Services to provide professional development for teachers and administrators for the 2018-19 school year.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan and seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Does Ms. Kuznich do this individually, or does she have a team that she brings with her?
She does it individually, works with multiple campuses. You know, in the past, we worked with International Leadership Center. We've tailored that down to very few campuses now, much less that we're spending in that area, but we continue to benefit from Lynn coming in and working with teachers, visiting classrooms. I know most recently, she was at Roberts Middle School. So again, it's a principal-requested staff development. I know she works with Sam Rayburn. We have the principal from Sam Rayburn here, but again, it's 15 days of consulting just by Lynn.
Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2018-19 contract between Shallow Treatment Center and Pasadena ISD for residential placement of one special education student.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Kiano. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2018-19 contract between Pasadena ISD and Shallow Treatment Center for Tuition and Educational Services for seven special education students. So moved. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is that right? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2018-19 memorandum of agreement with the University of Houston Clear Lake for two BCBA graduate assistants.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, who was that? Seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of a letter of support from the PISD Board of Trustees for the Texas 21st Century Community Learning Centers Cycle 10 Grant.
So, second.
Mr. Kendrick, was that you? Okay. Mr. Fernandez, I'm sorry, Kenny, you're going to have to speak up because for some reason I can't hear you from down there. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. You'll notice on your agenda, there have been two items that have been pulled, number 11 and 12, so we'll move to number 13. Consideration and possible approval for the Sam Rayburn High School Choir to travel to Florida on April 24th through 29th, 2019, to perform at the Disney, Performing Arts Workshop at the Disney World Resort.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Sam Rayburn High School Texan Battalion Army Junior ROTC Leadership Team to travel to Washington, DC, June 22nd through 26th, 2018, to compete in the 2018 J ROTC Leadership and Academic Bowl.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the J Frank Dobie High School Qualifying Team Members to travel to Fairview Heights, Illinois, on June 22nd through 25th, 2018, to compete in the U.S. High School Bowling National Championship.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the J Frank Dobie High School AF J ROTC Team Members to travel to Washington, DC, June 22nd through 26th, 2018, to compete in the J ROTC Leadership and Academic Bowl.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion?
I have a comment. I think it's wonderful that we have two high schools that placed in the top group to go along to Nationals. These kids do a great job, and they have great leadership, and our district is extremely proud to have them go on in the competition.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Any questions on this? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of students and faculty. Pardon? Did somebody say something? Okay.
Somebody called.
Okay. Faculty from Pasadena High School to travel to and from Washington, DC and New York City for educational and experiential reasons during spring break 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving to student achievements, we have, there's none that we're going to be recognizing tonight. I understand that our next meeting, we will have many. Policy update and review, we have none, we have some listed in the book, but none that we are recognizing tonight. Moving to the financial section. Consideration and possible approval of the budget amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of student accident UIL insurance for 2018-19 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
No inquiries, that's pretty neat.
Yeah. And consideration and possible approval of designation of investment officers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of interlocal contract with one government procurement alliance, One GPA.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of property and casualty insurance program for 2018-19. Do we have a presentation on this?
We do have John that's going to come forward and share with you some exciting news and opportunities, and then we'll talk some more.
Good evening. As I get started, I'd like to introduce the guests we have here this evening. We have, from Gallagher Insurance, we have Mike Barnmore and Bill Barnmore and Joe Bosie and Mcgriff Stevo Williams, who assist us in our team placing all of our insurance every year. The insurance market is always a funny animal here, but Mike and I were reminiscing earlier where we used to pay $600,000 to get full coverage in the district. Then we had some downturns in the market, and we ended up raising our premium to $2 million to get half a million, for $500 million of coverage. And then came Katrina and Rita and those funny animals, and then our premium went up to $5.5 million, but we could only get $50 million of coverage at that time. We had to beg and borrow just to get $50 million because it was hard to find at all in those markets. And we've had a little bit better success lately, but this year, our team has really done some hard work and pushed some of our companies we work with, and this year, we've been able to come up with a proposal to possibly increase our coverage from $50 million to $75 million. And why is that a critical factor here? If you look at our buildings, if we have a hurricane come through, in the case of that damage, you have some odds that FEMA is going to step in and help you if it's a national disaster area, and that'll help out because all we have is $50 million of coverage. But take one of our buildings, like Dobie High School. That building's sitting out there at about $123 million. If we have a non-federal disaster come in, like a major fire, a tornado comes in and rips up that building, we have $50 million of coverage, period. And not being a federal disaster, there's no federal help to come in and help us. So that's when we've got to look at our fund balance to bail ourselves out. So in previous years, we've always had them do runs to get, what would it cost to do $75 million? What would it cost to do $100 million? And those numbers have been totally prohibitive to even talk to the board about. This year, they came in and have some fantastic proposals, and our recommendation, as you see in your packet, is to increase our coverage to $75 million. Even going to $75 million, our total insurance package will be less than what we paid last year.
Wow.
And so here again, that's for $75 million of coverage, but one of the things we also talked about- we also talked about was what if we were able to go to 100 million dollars of coverage? And with increasing another couple of hundred thousand dollars, we could up that to 100 million dollars, but then you have to say, well, at what point in time is it worth it? What is the risk? So Dr. Powell and I have talked about it and our recommendation as of now is 75 million dollars seems adequate, especially what, call comes out, what can you afford based on budget and what is the real risk of things happening? So that will be our recommendation this evening. If the board members have any interest in the 100 million or whatever, we'd be glad to talk some more about that.
Do you wanna distribute? I think you prepared something for them to look at. Again, we made this recommendation and talked about it and I was very excited about what you were able to do for us. A little uncomfortable with not having a budget yet in front of you to spend any more money. I know 200,000 doesn't sound like a lot of money right now, but when you see the budget, you're gonna understand every dollar's gonna count this year. Don't wanna scare Carla just yet, but we're gonna have an interesting year with budget like many schools across Texas, regardless of the amazing work that you as a board and our community did to support us in the TRE. Because of our enrollment decreasing, we've got some struggles ahead. But again, we're excited about this proposal, but we wanna give you all the information that came to us.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure. Let's get a motion on the floor and then, okay. Motion by Mr. Kendrick.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roberts. Now discussion. Go ahead Fred.
Worst-case scenario, and we hope we never have this situation, but let's say we had a shooter in our school, all right? What does that fall underneath? Down free, so. Got your brother to help you?
The shooter situation is interesting. One of the guys on our team is a guy named Dave Marcus who is from the East Coast and one of his clients is Broward County School District. And we had a great opportunity to talk with him when he was down here three weeks ago about that particular issue. You've got, again, in the case of Broward, what they found was that their biggest issue was support and counseling and basically getting advice about, how do you handle this with the media? Because the media, it is an absolute circus and you've gotta be very, very careful about what you say. You obviously are gonna be supportive of the folks who have lost loved ones and that's your main concern. But there are insurance coverages designed for that, Mr. Roberts, that you can buy.
Is that in here or?
It's not in here. It's one of the optional things that we've talked about and we can propose that. One of the big issues you run into is that campus where the shooting happened, they'll never use that campus again.
Yeah.
And so they were fortunate in the state of Florida bought that campus or took that campus and paid them for it, but that doesn't always happen.
Yeah.
And so you've got a situation and there's no insurance that covers that. That's the problem. The insurance you guys have would require physical damage to the building, did an insured peril before it's covered and so you've got bullet holes and terrible memories there and people don't ever wanna go back to it. And now you've got a 100,000 square foot campus you can't use anymore. And that's a, that is a big deal.
Do we carry terrorists?
We do not. And that wouldn't fall under a terrorist act because a terrorist act has to be so designated by the federal government and that was not designated as that. So there are a lot of, a lot of things that everybody's having to think about now that we've never had to think about before.
It'd be interesting to see what the, what the cost is.
Yeah, we can certainly propose that and talk about it.
Just look at it, see what the cost is. Hopefully, we never wanna use any of these.
No, no.
I understand that, you know, you just want to collect premiums and never have to pay on them. We never, oh, that's all we wanna do too. But, you know, something like that, if you had a catastrophe of that nature, there's gonna be lawsuits and everything else that are gonna be out there.
It is, it is a terrible thing and it's, and it's a shame that we have to consider these kind of things, but you have to.
Yeah, it'd just be worth looking at and see what the cost is.
And we'll be glad to propose that.
Mike, one thing that amazes me is that it's gone down.
Put the mic in front of your mouth. No, that's okay.
That it's gone down some considering all the things that have happened in this part of the country the last several years. I assume that our flood insurance is a different ballgame because of FEMA and so forth that doesn't affect this.
No, it's a different deal. We carry the FEMA flood insurance really to fund the deductible that's under this property policy. It has a deductible that is the FEMA limits only for those schools that are in the 100-year flood plain, the special flood hazard areas. And we have, I think about 70 or 75 buildings that are in that area now. But it's a different animal. That, that coverage is still federally subsidized and it's relatively expensive, but when you compare it to the cost of commercial flood insurance, it's dirt cheap compared to what it would be if you went out to try to buy it before that. Our concern on these limits issues that John certainly discussed perfectly is not only that issue of the single campus, but the actual modeling on the district. We have, within Gallagher, we have companies that do modeling of what would a catastrophe likely be and it's based on the construction and the geographic spread of your buildings. And most districts, most companies insure to a 250-year possible loss, about a .4% possibility of loss. And the district models out to be about $136 million for that .4% loss. That would be where most companies would insure to. Now, it hasn't made economic sense for you guys to buy that kind of limits, but the non- FEMA participation with a tornado, for example, or a bad fire is one issue, but we've got a number of campuses that are situated so close geographically that the same event could really, you know, if the worst case happened, we could really have some big losses out here. We've been very fortunate that we haven't had and we just, a lot of good things happened this year where we were able to negotiate these rates down, where the rates were actually going up this year. And so it's one of those things that we wanted to put the information in front of you guys and obviously you've gotta do whatever you've gotta do on this. But it's really an opportunity that we haven't had to buy these higher limits at a price that would increase your budget about 100,000 from what it was last year to have the 100 million dollar limits. And so again, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Does anybody, go ahead Fred.
Where does, thinking about my fellow members here, where do we fall under this? Or do we? Do we have any type of liability coverage as board members? Do we fall under the general liability?
Educator's legal liability coverage, yes, you do.
Okay, okay. And what is, what does the educational liability? What is the, I'm sorry, the ed, legal liability? That is strictly for the educators or what is?
It would include the employees of the district, including the board. And there's a variety of lawsuits that can be attached to service on any kind of board as you guys know, but we have a million dollar limit. We have some reasonable deductibles and have a very broad coverage for them. We've been with the same carrier probably, I don't know how many years, 10 years maybe? Something like that. And they do a chub and they do a really good job on it, so.
Y'all have done an amazing job for us for as long as I've been on the board and I'm grateful.
Well, thank you.
And I'm grateful that you're back and I'm grateful that we don't have an increase that we have.
We are thrilled with it.
Yeah, it concerns me what's gonna happen next year, you know, it's, it's anybody's guess.
It's a year at a time. We just, whatever the market is, we deal with it.
I know that.
You know, having, having the resources of Gallagher to be able to buy makes a big difference, so.
Well, I really appreciate, I appreciate every one of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
No more questions? Let's move on the motion made by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Moving to the operations section. Consideration possible approval of the interlocal agreement with new KNEISD for commercial driver's license third-party testing. So moved. Second. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Keano. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the interlocal agreement with Galena Park ISD for commercial driver's license third-party testing. So moved. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries.
I'd like to commend these people on the bottom of this list, the recommendation for being proactive, trying to shorten your time. Thank you.
Yes.
Anything we can do to help get drivers on the road?
Absolutely.
Exciting and we're even looking to doing our own testing perhaps.
Oh, good.
So they're working with their business office on that.
Good. Consideration possible approval of the budget and design services agreement for the new maintenance operations and warehouse facility project included in the 2017 bond program. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of change order number 001 for the new LF Smith Elementary School Replacement Project. So moved. Motion by Ms. Sullivan. Second. Seconded by Ms. Keano. Discussion. Nuns, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of change order number 002 for the new LF Smith Elementary School Replacement Project.
We'll move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the full final and complete release agreement for damages that occurred at LF Smith Elementary School. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion.
Yes. No after effects from the water.
Kevin, I'm sure that, you know, mentally stressed that staff was and I'm sure Shawna couldn't be included in that, but we're very pleased with the work that Dramal has done to get it back like it was on those first few days. It's a very expensive plumbing mistake that was made, but do you wanna talk about how the building's been restored or any issues?
I just would agree. Dramal has done a great job getting it back to its original state before the flood.
There was never any doubt that they wouldn't.
Right. And the insurance company has been very cooperative. They've given us credit for everything that we turned in, for furniture, hours, labor, everything that we had documented. So this check would be the full amount from what we documented.
Great. Thank you very much, Kevin.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of budget for Parks Elementary School Roof Replacement Project and funding by the 2011 bond contingency pool. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the construction contract for the synthetic turf replacement and drainage replacement and drainage improvements at Veterans Memorial Stadium Project. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. We have been provided a copy of the construction update. Does anyone have any questions?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Are we, have we moved off the 6% on the architect? I noticed it was 6.3 a while ago. Are we moving off the 6%?
We've been at 6.3 for several years.
We have? I thought we were at 6, because the other week when I asked it, it was, it was, we did one at 11 and 1/2.
Right.
Which was pretty astounding, but, and I thought in that conversation we said 6, but it's 6.3.
The base is 6. We had .2 for technology consultant and .1 for roofing consultant.
Okay, all right. And another question. This is normally the time of year when things start warming up. How's our air conditioning situation going? Knock on wood.
Uh-uh. I don't want to hear that.
Normally this time of year, we start seeing issues with air conditioners and I hadn't seen any new ones and thank goodness and we said.
Well, we have some in the bond.
We do.
The 2017 bond. We are definitely gonna need to talk about HVAC and the people that work on those with the new budget coming forward.
Right.
It's gonna be a priority to keep those old systems up and going, so.
Is that all the people that do that or?
No.
It's been a challenge. We've lost, I think, 14 of our experienced HVAC in the last couple of years.
They're paying more elsewhere and taking them from us, so we've gotta address that.
We need to address it. So we're using contracted labor to supplement.
Which is more expensive.
Yeah, yeah, it is. That's all I had. I just noticed I hadn't seen it in a while.
Anyone else have any questions about construction update? Okay, moving to the miscellaneous section. No communications, no public comments, and I'm gonna call on our attorney, Dr., I mean, Dexter Joyner. Yeah, it's okay. To make an announcement about board member credits, please.
This is a board of training.
Pull the, the mic in front of you Dexter.
This is a board of training announcement of April 24th, 2018. The 85th Texas Legislature in 2017 added a new training requirement for the Board of Trustees. This training is added by Senate Bill 1566 and is regarding evaluating student academic performance. Board must now complete three hours of training every two years on this subject. Senate Bill 1566 also made changes to the Texas Education Code regarding when boards announce their yearly required continuing education credits. Instead of announcing at the last regular board meeting of the calendar year as done in past years, boards will now announce at the last regular board meeting before trustee elections. Pasadena ISD hosts trustee elections in May, so from now on, we will announce at the April regular board meeting. PISD announced board training credits at our last regular board meeting of 2017 at the November 28th meeting and all board members met or exceeded all requirements. During this transition time of January 1, 2018 through April 24, 2018, each PISD board member met or exceeded all categories of training credits except one, team building. This category was not met during this four-month transition period because of insufficient time. The board last received team building training on 11/28/2017. We will begin collecting training credits again in May of 2018 and will announce at the regular board meeting in April 2019, which will get us back on a 12-month schedule. It is now time to announce the continuing education credits received by the Facilling Independent School District Board of Trustees for January 1, 2018 through April 28, 2018. Completing the annual required continuing education is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member under the State Board of Education rules. The following information will be reflected in the minutes of this meeting. Update to Texas Education Code. There was no update to the Texas Education Code during the period of January 1, 2018 through April 24 of 2018. Team building. Insufficient time for this training during this transition period of January 1, 2018 through April 24 of 2018, the board last received team building training in November 28 of 2017. Additional continuing education. Vicky Morgan exceeds requirement of five hours. Jack Bailey exceeds requirement of five hours. Nelda Sullivan exceeds requirement of five hours. exceeds requirement of five hours, Nelda Sullivan exceeds requirement of five hours, Maricel Kehano exceeds requirement of five hours, Fred Roberts exceeds requirement of five hours, Kenny Fernandez exceeds requirement of five hours, Marshall Kendrick exceeds requirement of five hours. Senate Bill 1566, all seven board members receive three hours of credit each as required from this training at Winter Governance Seminar in Galveston, Texas on March 3, 2018. Records of the training received by individual board members are available for public inspection in the superintendent's office. And that concludes it, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Joyner. At this time, the next order and the last order of business is to set a date for our next regular meeting. Suggested date is May 22, 2018. Do I hear a motion?
We'll move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.